At 7 o'clock.
Are we back on, are we on that though?
It's bubbling streaming right now.
Yeah, yeah. Did it go black?
I didn't see it. I was looking.
Maybe I'm not calling me.
Because it's not showing, it's supposed to show us and it's not. So that's why I don't want you to go too far.
There you go.
Okay, no. I'd like to call Thursday, November 18th Board of Education meeting to order at 7:01 PM. We'll call Chairman Papa Holzer here, Vice Chair Nofrio.
Here.
Secretary Sienna.
Here.
Sienna Bosomo.
Here.
Zachary Canada.
Here.
Cynthia Rice.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Zach, you want to introduce yourself? We want to welcome you to the board. Zach is a newly elected member to the Board of Education. Want to just say hi to everyone? Sorry, I'm pretty.
I know, right? Hi, everybody. Thank you. You know, I'm Zach Canada. Happy and privileged to be here. Looking forward to spending some time getting to know and get caught up with some of the other board members as well as administrative staff. And look forward to meeting and reading with the folks that work in schools as much as I can and hopefully making a positive impact. Get my feet wet, of course, but other than that, just very happy to be here.
Great, thanks.
Welcome.
Martha, I would like to do the Constitution.
Yeah, that's what he was getting. That's what he was getting there. Perfect.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I apologize.
Oh, yeah.
The first order of business will be the election of officers for Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary.
I would like to nominate Shawna Papa Holzer for Chair.
Sir.
Should we discuss?
We can cast one vote. Let's ask if there are any other nominations.
Are there any other nominations? Cast one vote. We will now accept nominations from board members for the Office of Vice Chair. I nominate Marcy Inofrio.
Sir.
Cast one vote. We will now accept nominations from board members for the Office of Board Secretary.
I would like to nominate that Sienna.
I second. Cast one vote.
That was nice and easy.
That was very easy, yeah. Okay, let's talk about committee assignments and appointments.
Can you do all three?
Zach, I know you were going. Yep, I know you were going over them with Beth. They kind of discussed them a little bit.
Oh, they did?
Just prior.
Yeah, so I don't know if.
Okay, so. When were you guys discussing?
Well, Jeff was on pension and permanent project. So Zach was willing to join me on those. I think he also had an interest in alternates for some of the others.
Okay.
He's willing to join you on pension?
Yes.
Okay, and what did you say? And permanent project?
Permanent project building.
Could you permanent project?
Welcome.
Yeah, if there's a conflict, I'll bring that up to someone here, right? Or the actual.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, I'd like you to be on permanent project.
If Zach travels for business, so if he can't be on permanent project and he's a permanent member, can one of us go and he says an alternate?
I wouldn't say so.
Beth, when you started with permanent project, you were sworn in by the town, correct?
The town has to approve.
So I think what we should do is when we swear in one, we should have an alternate swearing in as well.
Right.
And that way we're covered and they're approved by the council and that would be clear to do that.
Okay.
Okay?
That's smart.
Okay, so you're gonna do it Shawna?
I'll do the alternate.
Alternate, okay.
Somebody will be there for coverage.
Yeah, because.
And then we have Beth too, so I just don't want to lose a.
A vote.
A vote ever.
Yeah.
But Zach said you were interested in alternate too, maybe for negotiations or budgets. An alternate on one of the other ones or?
Yeah, that's.
You can do whatever you want.
I thought you put me in an alternate, I didn't want to do.
Alternate on negotiations, that'd be a good one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you fill in these in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Budget in operations, we do. We do it in the board now. We do this for the meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
It's kind of an ad, a lot of these are ad hoc. The only ones that are really not ad hoc are negotiations, curriculum.
Permanent project.
And permanent project and pension and ACES. The rest of them are pretty much ad hoc, so.
Beth, do you want to start doing curriculum as part of the main board meeting unless there are very in-depth areas? Or do you like curriculum separately? I just, I see you're down here. I just want to know this stuff. So like, we pulled budget into the main board meeting so that the whole board could kind of participate and so that it would be filmed and so that everyone else could kind of hear budget issues. Do you want to do that with curriculum as well and bring the curriculum in?
Won't we kind of do that because we bring it up and usually I defer to Tracy because she's.
So Tracy's kind of doing it twice.
There would be no meeting at 5:30.
No meeting at 5:30.
So we would start it at 7 o'clock. Tracy would do an abridged condensed overview and then the entire board would hear it. Or do you want to stay with what we had been doing? Where you would get the full presentation and then report back to the board.
I mean, I say we leave an ad hoc committee, so if there's something that's very in-depth that we need to dive into, we can do that, but overall, I think.
I feel like you're doing it twice, Tri. I feel like you're doing it twice.
Doing a lot of information twice.
I can do it. Would you, either way you guys would like? I would just say too that obviously if we do it in the board meeting, it will be condensed as well as times for questioning and all that would be also condensed or lessened.
You know what I would love and I think the same what Martha does? If you gave us the presentation prior in our board packet so we can kind of skim through it and maybe mark it for questions so that when you came in with your abridged version, we would already have those questions targeted. So it would be the second time for us to hear the information. I mean, I know Martha sends it to us, so by the time we get there, I already know what I'm gonna ask or what might not, I might not understand and I think we've been in that format as well. I kind of like everyone hearing the information so they can weigh in on it. I mean, I'm not the curriculum expert, but I'd like to hear it.
Sure.
Okay.
While we're on that subject, you and I had a discussion. It is in here?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we could bring it up now.
What's it here?
The consent agenda?
Yeah, that's on there.
Well, no, we talked about maybe even changing the tie.
You can't, Zach can't get here earlier.
Okay, okay, then that takes care. Nope, that's fine.
No, I forgot to tell Marcy.
Nope, that's fine. Okay, never mind.
Do you want to talk about the consent agenda?
Sure.
I mean, we might as well bring that up now since we kind of moved it around a little bit.
Well, years ago, years ago when I first got on the board, we used to have a consent agenda. And then people wanted to change it to this format, but there's, I don't have an issue going back to a consent agenda.
I'm sorry, what is the consent agenda? I think there's an example.
There's an example. So I transitioned twice in my 12 years to not having it. In 2010, we went to the consent agenda and then it flipped and turned again where we're not doing it. It basically gives you the ability to lump three different, four different things. It could be appointments, resignations, your minutes. And you would do a consent vote instead of reading each motion for every resignation, every appointment. So it really makes your timeline more efficient that you're clustering a few of those items and you're in consent and you vote one time to approve the consent agenda.
But you can take, you can pull anything out of a consent agenda.
And you can add to it.
Right.
You can make the motion to add to the consent agenda. If something happens and there's another resignation, you always can add to it. You always have the ability to do that. But if you see it ahead of time and it's, you're all in approval of it, it makes it more timely.
And if we pull in the curriculum and we do a consent agenda, but kind of even at the time, so we're not here, I mean, we wouldn't put things that really needed to go to a roll call vote on the consent agenda. Just kind of items that are, we know we're all kind of.
It kind of just, yeah, it kind of, instead of, you know, reading the same motion 14 times for 14 teachers to be hired, you know? I mean, but if there is any kind of motion in there, it's not a problem to pull it out from the consent agenda so we can do it separately, have a lot of discussion on it, have a little discussion on it, whatever, and then do a roll call as opposed to an all in favor.
At what time do you pull it out of the consent agenda? At that time from prior.
Before you vote on the consent agenda. So when you make a motion to approve the consent agenda, you could say, well, item D, I would like to pull out of the consent agenda.
Okay, and discuss.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Does that seem fair?
You guys want to give it a try? I mean, we can always go back to the old format if you don't like it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I have examples from 10 years ago of what it would look like when you would receive the board packet and then the minutes with the consent agenda where it's a narrative of everything that was said.
Perfect.
So you just have a.
I thought Anna sent it.
She did, a separate email. It wasn't included in this. It was a separate email.
I saw it.
Yeah.
Did everyone get the example in their email?
I didn't open it because I was out with my wife. I was just checking out and see if I had it. I'll check.
If you don't have it and you want a copy, just.
Let me know.
Yeah, let Scott send it out or we'll have Anna send it out. Okay, are we good on that, Zach?
I think so. All right.
Visitor? Okay. You guys are just so patient. Sorry about that. Go ahead, tell us, tell us about your report and what's going on in the schools.
I guess I'll go first. So first off, the MBHS Veterans Day activities were held via advisory to each grade doing an inspirational video focusing on veterans, their service, and their points of the holiday. Each grade level was provided with an opportunity to sign an oversized Veterans Day card. And the cards were then picked up by Gary Kerseyek, a 1965 grad and a Vietnam vet. Next, we have the National Honor Society induction ceremony was on October 26th. Thirty-five students were inducted into this distinguished organization with parents on hand to celebrate this great accomplishment. Twenty-twenty of FDs were also invited with several on hand. Last year's event was virtual. Mr. Thor and the NHS officers loved the event with members of the NHS MBHS Chamber Choir performing. And lastly, the MBHS, sorry. MBHS participated in a collection drive for Afghan refugees with donations provided to a local agency at the end of October. Donations for winter garments and toiletries, a pancake breakfast was prepared by Mr. Steffler, Mr. Woods, and a scholarship from students who love these and should have, under the direction of Mr. Stone. On November 5th, the MBHS baked environmental science and AP biology classes participated in an outdoor field trip to Chapel and Holy Park. Students were required to participate in a variety of assignments while on site, including testing water samples from a variety of areas. Mrs. Paulini and Mrs. Redmond organized this trip once again, an annual event prior to the event. The MBHS Dream Team, which consists of eighteen students, is up and running once again. Mrs. Sefora and the students visited MBIS on November 10th, provided presentations to middle school students. And throughout the year, the Dream Team will visit JHS, TBS, and MBIS. And a field hockey update, the North Branford Field Hockey Team has a current record of fifteen, two and two, and is moving on to the state finals after beating Rambie by a score of three to two in the semifinals. We play Stonington on Saturday at 2:00 PM at Weatherford Basketball.
Good luck, girls.
Thanks.
So obviously, that's quite an accomplishment for the field hockey team once again to get to that, to that level. And a lot of things have to go right in order to make it to a state championship. And they've done it many times over the years, over Coach Noon's extended career with us. So she's a nationally recognized coach. Her assistants or graduates, they are college coaches, college players, former players. And it's amazing, Coach Noon's connection to all of her players that ever played for her, regardless of whether they went on to play after high school or in high school, the relationship she forms with them and it's just a huge accomplishment. So congratulations to your team, to Coach Noon, and we're all so proud of you. And best of luck against Stonington on Saturday, okay?
You can stay or you can go.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
It's hard to leave.
Go home and rest. Let's go.
Okay, then moving on, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 28th, 2021 Special Board of Education meeting as submitted.
I'll second. We need a little coffee because that.
I have to stand.
Yes.
Chairman Papa Holzer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nofrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Sienna Bosomo abstaining. Zachary Canada?
Abstaining.
Ready for the resolution?
Make the next one. Make a motion to approve the appointment of Haley Bryden to the position of School Psychologist at North Branford High School to be placed on six-year, step five for the contract between the North Branford Board of Education and the North Branford Federation of Teachers.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Scott, take it away.
So firstly, I'd like to share how excited, pleased, happy that I am that we are able to find a school psychologist, one that is in a district right now that comes with a great deal of experience. And the district that she's leading had nothing but incredible things to say about her. And we are anxiously awaiting. We've been very fortunate. Ms. Williams has, a retiree of ours, has been helping out and doing a lot of the assessment pieces. While we've had this vacancy, as you know, I've shared with you that we've had other candidates that have fallen through and it's been quite a process. And many districts are struggling trying to find school psychologists. So we are really, really pleased. And I thank the administrative team and the interview team for doing the hard work. And Sarah Alberti, our director, for being persistent with this. It's great news for the district.
Yes.
Recognition, I don't have any at this time right now, other than I mentioned our field hockey team. I'd like to recognize the board. I do not get involved in any of the appointments of any of the seats that you hold, but I commend you for working cross-party lines together to continue with what's been working for the board and your working relationship. That says a great deal about your commitment to the kids, so thank you.
Thank you.
Donations, we do not have a donation, but we made a donation to the Nero family from our football game. We had a separate fundraiser there and the high school is doing a number of things for the Mrs. Nero who very sadly passed two weeks ago. So we're continuing to reach out and help, and help the Nero family. I'm really proud of the community effort and our students and the surrounding schools that are helping out as well. We have the board of briefs under Exhibit C. You've had a chance to look at them if there's anything that you have questions about. Obviously, we're going into the holiday. They've been really busy getting ready for the upcoming break and the timelines and things that are going on. So feel free to ask if you have any questions. If not, we'll move on. There is no field trips provided at this time that I can share with you. We are looking to open up the auditorium for our concert performances and we're breaking them up by grade. So if you have a child in fourth grade, do a fourth grade class, we'd come and perform in the auditorium. We do distancing, but we're gonna start going back to live performances. Controlled, following our protocols to get us back into a very safe, similar to what we did with the National Honor Society where parents can come in and see their children perform. So that, that's gonna be starting for the winter concert series.
Great.
Okay? CAPE. I don't have a CAPE handout. If you are interested in attending a CAPE workshop or let me know, I'll send information to you. Zach, if there's something that you want to see or go to, we have the ability to do that.
Scott, do you remember, I don't know, I think it was about eight months ago, you gave all the board members like a nice packet?
I have one packet left for Zach and I'll get another one for our new member.
We got one.
So I didn't overwhelm you the other day.
That's fine.
I just gave you short stack. The tall stack order, that's coming.
Perfect.
And I have that for you.
Okay, perfect. I think that's really helpful. I actually provided my card just in case that needed it, even though it had, you know, someone.
Sure.
The CAPE orientation, I've been to them, I've been to three CAPE orientations over the year and they're, over the years, and they're very helpful. Although it is during the workday, I mean, you know, people have to take a day off, you know? But they are very helpful if anybody wants to go, even if you've been here. Even if you've been here, you know, and you're not new, you can still go. I learned something new every, every time that I went, I learned more. So they were really, they were worthwhile. I mean, I think, I think they start at like 11 and they go till like seven or eight at night and break you up into different groups and, but I found it very interesting.
And if the board ever has a topic that we want to get trained on and bring CAPE into us, we can do that as well. So if there's, I don't know, a policy training or a finance training or anything in particular, it's, you know, let's go.
Yeah, we have the ability to pay for any service that we want. But I will get you that packet.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, consent agenda, I think we.
We already hit that.
We're done with that.
Yeah.
And committees. CAPE, we're finished. Social, emotional learning, Exhibit D. There was a letter that went out on November 1st and there was a request to put this on the agenda to discuss.
Yeah.
And in conversations, we thought that a better way to do this, to really give an informative presentation, would be to pick a separate night where we could come together. A PowerPoint has been made by the administrative team and by Ms. Moon that we would sit through and go through and then share any information and exemplars of things that we're doing at each level in our schools under PBIS and other things that you're aware of.
Yeah.
And kind of tie in so there's not misinformation out there and there's not a perception because of all the things that are going around right now that you're seeing that's getting national attention locally, right around the surrounding towns. We could really have a presentation that's informative, that's giving the board the opportunity or anyone that wanted to come out and really see and dive into what's going on and what we have been doing for many, many years.
Scott, can we open that up to parents, please?
Absolutely.
I don't know if it could be in the cafeteria or in the auditorium.
We can have it wherever you'd like.
I think that when we start beginning to look at, and we've been doing it for years, right? Like holistically educating a child, but when you're starting to veer further into values and not when it's, you know, math, English, history, I really want to get the flavor of what our parents and our community are looking for. So no one's gonna tell you they don't want a responsible child who's, you know, that's kind and accountable and mindful. No one's gonna say that. But when you start hitting topics like gender identity or social justice, when you start hitting topics like that, and we may not be, which I want that to be heard too, that I just, I want them to understand because SEL, when you hear it, some people are gonna be like, of course, we've been doing that for like 50 years in North Branford and it's evolved over time. And we have school climate and we have, you know, different things. And, and part of us moving forward is collecting metrics. And this is what these metrics are gonna do and this is how it's linked to academic achievement. And so I think when parents see the whole picture and have a chance to say, hey, okay, I get this. Can I ask a question? It gets more buy-in so that we just kind of squash any concern or fear because social, emotional learning as a, like a concept in itself is what we all really are looking for, right? We're all looking for well-rounded children that are specifically minded essentially, right?
And when people start Googling it on the internet, it's dangerous. You have opposite ends here, you know, and it gets very.
Extremes.
A lot of extremes and it's unnerving people and.
I think hearing from our administrators and giving examples and looking at where, what's happening in grades seven, eight, and 10 in our health.
Yeah, I agree.
Through the state.
Right.
You really look at what the state requires to our health curriculum and what we're doing. And I think y'all have a better idea and that'll open up that.
Right. And, you know, Carter and Tracy have been really kind, kind of going back and forth with me on, you know, some of the concerns that I have and, you know, what's, what we are doing, what we're not doing, what we don't want to do, what we do want to do. So it's been really helpful because I've been educating myself before I got here. So I was a little bit more at ease, but I'm still, you know, frankly, I'm a little nervous and especially if the state's gonna start mandating value-based curriculum, I'm not super comfortable with that. So we need to be clear what's mandated and regulated and where there's room for deviation because it's not a one-size-fits-all for every town and it's not a one-size-fits-all for every family. It gets a little dicey when you start touching on values.
Right. And I think, once you see it and once you have the opportunity to question and really probe into some of those things, I'm confident that you're.
Have we set a date for that yet?
No, because we just came on and then.
Because Zach just got here.
And so we're gonna look at, you know, it doesn't have to be next Wednesday night before Thanksgiving, but we want to.
No, I can't do that.
No.
I do, do a little cooking.
But we can put out to my office a very quick question on what availability, what better times? Because we know what the schedules and work and people getting, it could be better at 7 o'clock and it could be better on a Tuesday or.
And we want to make sure the school community can attend too.
Yeah.
So, you know, we want that.
Right. We're not gonna ask them for the date and time, but we're.
No, we're not gonna ask them.
We're gonna be as inclusive as we can.
Right.
We'll put that out.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay?
I would try, I would like to not try, let me start over. I would like to not use the auditorium. Hearing in the auditorium is very difficult and I think that that's only gonna cause issues for us. People are gonna be, I can't hear, I can't hear, I can't hear.
No, the middle school cafeteria is comfortable.
Yeah, that's, that's fine if that's what you want to do. The auditorium, the acoustics are not great there and.
Can we talk about the, just in that meeting, is there something we could bring up on a cause and effect on the financial aspect of that? Meaning, yes, it may be free, but what is the long-term effect on the school take in terms of taking teachers into that nature, putting them on, you know, taking away from academics and.
Sure. Sure, absolutely.
Barry, can you hear Zach?
So just.
Oh, sorry. I thought that was.
Well, our microphones are missing.
So, yeah, sorry, looking just for some financial analysis on, you know, cause and effect, how that looks like, what it costs, you know, if it is, I think the letter did state that it was free of charge.
Free from the state.
You know, it's kind of like one of those things, you get a pool put in your backyard and that's great and it's for free, but now you gotta maintain it, right? So how does that, what's that cost look like? You gotta close it, train, treat the water, close it for, or open it for the summer or spring, sorry. And then also, you know, I got insurance I gotta pay for it. So there's other things that associate to it. I'd be curious to see financials.
And we did just, as you mentioned, in the letter, we notified the state because of this ongoing discussion that we would give it to another district. So there was no cost to us, to, and there was no forfeiture cost or anything, so we're clear.
Great, thank you. And we appreciate that.
That's very nice.
Yeah, that we're having a discussion about it.
Yeah.
I really do appreciate it. All right, student achievement?
Student achievement, so.
Do you want to do student achievement or capital first?
So John can go. Can we move capital?
Yes, of course.
So let's, I'm gonna pass a sheet around to you for summary of capital projects.
Who's gonna join?
And John is gonna, oh, this is the email.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah.
I always want.
You usually.
Yep. Just so you don't have.
I'm continuing.
You're welcome.
You'll see the next stop, which is like a fast, you know what I mean? Don't.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The next day.
So Zach, if you don't.
Hi, John.
John Florio, I don't think you've met Zach.
Canada?
Long Island. So John is wearing two hats at this time, actually probably 32 hats, but he is, he is our Director of School Facilities. He took over for a retired position, but he's also acting in the same capacity of doing a lot of our hands-on repairs for HVAC because of his licensing and all that. So he's kind of ice age.
Yeah.
So this is who is standing in front of you. All right, take it away, John.
Okay. Do you want to go over the old capital room first?
Yeah, please.
Okay, well, if you work it up from the bottom, you see they're all closed except for the water infiltration project, 2016, 17, that was moved up. And then go to the auditorium, water brickwork, which actually is the same project.
Oh, it is?
So if you move that up, that whole brickwork project-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is now rolled into the roofing, the replacement of the roof.
Okay.
Tom has instructed Rusty from QA&amp;M to come up with a roof design to repair the leaky roof, and that will also include-
Taking care of these two things.
I don't know if anybody has seen it. The board, the permanent building committee have picked a hybrid design.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of will match the high school roof.
Yeah.
So they're trying to solve those roofly problems along with it, water problem that comes in through the brickwork.
Right.
So is the NBIS brickwork in the auditorium, brick ceiling, like one in the same? Like it's all going to be done together?
It's, it has to all be done in conjunction because we had two problems at the end of the year at school. One is the roof design,
Yeah.
which the water spills over the face of the building. Number two, the building should have had flat brick joints like you see there.
Yeah.
They had raised brick joint, which they don't have in commercial buildings. So what happens is the water gets in the joint, freezes, it expands, and then driving rain gets in through the cracks. So they're going to re-point that entire building to a flat joint.
Including the auditorium.
To a flat joint, block and fix roof.
And the auditorium.
The auditorium's done.
Oh, the auditor, how come the money's still here?
The auditorium is done.
It says auditorium brick ceiling open.
The auditorium was done last summer.
The ceiling, the ceiling of the-
Is that different, the ceiling?
No, that's gone.
Okay, so-
That's a different project.
Okay, so the auditorium brick ceiling Martha still has open over here. Or I don't know who has open. Martha, where'd you get this?
This is from the town, directly from Anthony.
Okay, so we should maybe let them know that the brick ceiling for the auditorium is done?
Well, it looks like they gave us 112 and we spent 71, so there's 40,000 still there.
So we can't split it unless it's designated, right?
The town did have the corporate orders on that job, so they know that job is done.
Right.
Okay, I'm going to write, I mean, they must know it's done. We just have extra money.
They do.
Okay, so that might be redistributed. Brick, Rusty.
It was sealed. So just so you're aware, the NBIS roof slash cleaning ceiling project is going to be in the millions. It's not going to be in the hundreds of thousands. So I don't, I don't want you to think-
Yeah, right now, we estimate, right now, it's four and a half million, right? It's going to go up.
So my question is, like, do we ask for that in our, hey, can I have a smooth formal for the roof?
No, perfect.
That's a town project.
Yeah, the town, the town-
That's a town, okay. I don't know how that's going to really go over.
No, they're already well aware of it.
I know they're on it, but I've seen it over the-
No, they're well aware of it. It's been presented to the council.
Okay, yeah.
The permanent building committee's working on it.
Which is better suited. Yeah, and I think that's probably a better place for it to be addressed than-
Yeah, it's a good-sized project.
Yeah, and there needs to be expertise that's not us.
That's not us.
So if you go up from there, 2008 to 2020 unit ventilators, the first batch of unit ventilators that were purchased, they're installed. There's, we purchased 16 for Totem Valley and purchased two for the high school. 14 were installed at Totem Valley. Two are in storage, and the two we purchased from the high school were definitely going to go in the rooms that were demolished. So we have two batches that we're going to put into Totem Valley.
And so when will the remaining ventilators be installed and closed up?
I hope that's due right now.
Good thing asked.
These are the capital improvement projects that you'll be looking at.
Oh, great.
For the next-
Thank you.
That's great.
You could pick which ones are considered, whether you want to do-
See, I don't like to pick ones. I like to put them all in.
So if you want to go, want to start at the top, Totem Valley unit ventilators, you see there were 16, 14 were installed, two were in storage, two were going to go to the high school in storage. We need 15 to complete, so we need to purchase 11. They're $9,430 a piece delivered to us. So that's $103,730 just for the ventilators.
So it looks like, yes, air conditioning.
So the cost of the insulation, you see we do it in-house, it's going to go on, it's going to be about $75,000.
Okay.
So that $75,000, earmarked towards the maintenance budget, because that gets done in-house.
Okay.
That doesn't have to be capital.
Okay.
Just earmark that toward, put that $75,000 into the maintenance budget before connecting on the value.
Yeah, okay.
Project number two, lighting upgrade to Totem Valley. Lawn for Electric has an incentive program with the payback 40% if you lost. We had a lighting audit done already. It's $100,000 to purchase the lighting and get everything installed. Lawn for Electric estimates that you're going to save $22,000 a year by doing it. So it's going to cost you $60,000 when you're all done. You have to put the $100 up front. The Lawn for Electric's going to rebate you back $40,000. Put a little asterisk over there because we're going to have $60,000 left from the cooling tower job because the town already marked $100,000 in-house for that job. We told them we were doing it in-house. It's going to cost us somewhere around $40,000. So they said that they'll give us back to 60, but I took earmark towards other projects. So that might be something you might want to look into, that's your $60,000 right there. Totem Valley Jerome Harrison paving. The parking lot on the gymnasium side of Totem Valley in the front right corner over by the firehouse, totally deteriorated. About 20,000 square feet of paving. Jerome Harrison, the whole front circle, all the employee parking lot, all the employee parking lot on the other side. About $26,710 square feet of paving. So that's $131,500 worth of paving. That's not going to last very much longer. Jerome Harrison, that's the original paving. Has been there since 1998, 1999. It's the original paving. You got any money's worth on that? And Totem Valley, like I said, that side pretty deteriorated. Those are capital improvements I was looking at for the upcoming.
Well, you know, we've, we've kind of changed the way we've done things over the last few years. And just so that you understand, Zach, when it comes to budget time, the town council does not get line item veto to our budget. They give us a bottom-line dollar. They can't say, no, we're cutting it here and we're cutting it here. That's up to us. Capital, they have veto by line item. So in the past few years, we've given them the whole list because it's up to them anyways. Why should we pick and choose which ones we think are important? And then they say no because they think other ones are important. So, I mean, John, I think we should just put these all forward and let the town council decide. That's, I mean, no disrespect, that's their job. They decide which ones are important to them.
Yeah, and I think once this year when we're doing budget, because we've been caught a few times now that when we're talking about the past projects, giving them the open-closed with the status. So where we're at and why, like, oh, there's two ventilators in here, but we need 11, we need 15, we have four, you know, like-
Right.
That's kind of-
Well, what we did originally, we knew the thing, we knew we were only doing half the building, we were originally talking to Tom on the original ventilator project.
Yeah.
They said, we said how much the project was. They were willing to give us half of it, so we went ahead and personally went in. The only reason why the other two that we purchased were at Totem Valley aren't installed, they're on a different electrical grid, so we needed another transformer for the upper level.
Gotcha.
That's why we couldn't hook those up. We don't have the power for them. So they're in storage till we put the-
To the upgrade.
Upgrade to the electrical in the upper level.
Gotcha.
So I mean, this, that's important information, right? Like I feel sometimes when we do budget, we don't tell the story, right? And when people are giving you money, especially a lot of money, they like to hear the whole story. They don't want to just hear, this is what I want, these are the dollars. They want to hear the story behind it. And if you can say how it's going to impact the kids, that's even better.
Yeah. And as far as the other project that's open, the cooling tower at Jerome Harrison, what we did was, because it was a seasonally warm fall,
Right.
we were worried of shutting the air conditioning down in Jerome Harrison School for two to three weeks to change the cooling tower.
Yeah.
Gets pretty stuffy in that school.
Yeah.
With a lot of air conditioning.
Yeah.
So we let it go, all the way to when we switched over to heating. Now we're in the process of changing the cooling tower because cooling is off.
Okay, perfect. So that'll be done by the time we go to-
Right, so we're changing the cooling tower now.
Over break.
There's also an issue of bringing in the crane truck. It's got to be alongside the pre-school. We don't really want to do it when the kids are there. So we're going to do it on an ocular day or a holiday or a weekend or whatever. Bring the crane in, we can change them out. Then after that, we just pipe in the wire.
Okay, perfect.
A lot of preparation work has been done, prior to it. So it's just a matter of picking the date, over upgrade to get it in.
It looks like this is-
So just let me finish up by saying we had a very smooth transition to heating season this year. There are no major problems going on, not one. The only thing I got to say, you know, it took me 27 years, but we're over the hump. Our buildings are maintaining, our buildings are maintaining with no problems. There are no outstanding work orders. The administrators, I think, we did some, we're getting right back to it quickly. We're getting it done. It took 27 years, but we're there. Our buildings are running great.
Oh, my goodness.
Whatever you guys think for the capital improvements, let me know what's going on, and we'll go from there.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
All right, Tracy, segue.
Segue. So any money that John doesn't need, I would be happy to report for him in the structure.
It was going to be money.
It was about the dollar. That's the first one. This one? Yeah.
Are you going to, you're going to put it on the order?
I do, I have it on there.
Thank you.
I will also get, you know, I'll give you this copy over here of the first one. This is a, sorry.
There, what's the difference?
Here you go. This is, this is part two. This was part one. There you go. Following or during last month's presentation, we discussed subgroups for smarter balance, but we did not have that information from the state yet for SATs as well as for next-generation science standards testing. So we had that now, so I included that now. There was also a discussion about the, or asking about DIRG, so I just want to drop the information about the DIRG E, which is what we belong to.
Do you want to turn, so you can see the screen?
Yes. Yes.
Feel free to sit on the side so you can see it.
So in your packets, I cannot include these again, but just in case anyone is watching the presentation that had not been here or watched the presentation from last month, I just want to include these caution slides for the general public and anyone else. So this is really just letting everyone know and reminding people that last year, while we did have testing for standardized tests in Connecticut, the state districts and everyone else, including the federal government, have made it very clear that they understand that students had three different learning models they were able to access during the school year. Fully in person, fully remote, and hybrid. Hybrid means that they were between 25% and 75%. Membership was in-person. And then fully in person and fully remote are on the other ends of that spectrum. Obviously, it's also very important to understand who learned in which model when, and how often they switched back and forth because all of those things can affect teaching and learning. I just included that again for reference. Same thing here, another caution from the state. These are not based on matched cohorts, meaning I'm not looking, in some slides we do, but in the majority of slides, I'm not looking at the same children over time because it was a gap in the 1920s school year. There was no testing. So we are fortunate in that we had over 90% of students participate in testing for all testing, whether it be smarter balance, MGSS, or SAT. So the state understands and invalidates scoring when they consider it to be more than 90% of students participating, and we did indeed have that. So our results are worth analyzing. And one more thing, I really, although our scores are not indicative necessarily of exactly what we're doing because we have the different learning models, the state has determined that moving forward, this is the baseline that they will use for the next four or five years. So during our conversation for many years now, as a board, we have been looking at, right, showing you scores from surrounding or local towns. We actually belong to DIRG E. DIRGs go from A down to H, with A being some of the most affluent towns. We talked about what exactly determines what DIRG, and we did again this last month. We are in DIRG E. The question came up as to why we weren't presenting comparisons of the DIRG. So what I've done is, is give you the information. So those are all the schools in DIRG E along with us. This is alphabetical order. And then what I've done on the next slide is to show you the student population grades three through eight that participated in testing in a per pupil expenditure. And this may really give some insight into why we don't do DIRG references or DIRG comparisons. For instance, I will tell you that some of the greatest achievement in our DIRG comes out of Colebrook. Colebrook had 39 students, capable to grade three through eight participate testing. So while they do have, puts it 80%, levels three and four for smarter balance, I believe math and language arts, that was 29 students that that number was based on. So I believe they had people participate in grades five and six. Four was all remote, they didn't participate. So there are definitely some inconsistencies when you look at how the towns in the DIRG have participated. And there's economies scales when you look at per pupil expenditure. Obviously, a school district that's running a building or more with less than 100 people versus buildings and districts with 900 people, there are different expenses. We go anywhere from Brooklyn School District at $15,324 per pupil expenditure. This is for the 1920s school year, I believe, all the way to Sharon, that is over $40,000 a year per pupil expenditure.
And there are some schools on there, if I'm not mistaken, that don't even have high school. There's some towns that don't even have-
So that's why, this is three through eight.
Right.
These are only, they at least had 29 students participating in grades three through eight.
Right, okay.
So again, it's very, even that, when I think North Grandford had 745 students in that population for last year, do I consider it to be, the comparison being statistically valid when you look at a school like, a district like Hampton or Union with 29 students grades three through eight?
I don't.
Quite honestly, like Canaan is up here, I believe, or it might not even be because they didn't have enough students in any one grade level to warrant scoring that's publicized, meaning they had less than six people or 20 in a group in certain grades. So if you look at, this is the overall participation. So for instance, Union had 100% participation in smarter balance testing. So that means all 29 of those students, you have 29 of those students did participate in testing, but even though it's really relative, you need to understand that. 100% in Union needs 29 students. 100% in North Grandford would have met 745 students. So that being said, though, I did want to at least give the overall achievement of these districts. So again, this is 3 through 8 because so many of the districts didn't have full participation or enough participation in various grade levels to warrant every grade. I did it this way, so at least you can see where we stand. So North Grandford is there at 51.8% for ELA achievement, smarter balance 3 through 8 going all the way. And it was Colebrook School District at 79.5%. So 79% of the 29 students that participated in that test did achieve 3 or 4 in North Grandford. Obviously, percent is already weighted because it's meant on the majority or the group itself. But it's, I would say that this is probably the most accurate representation we can get if we go by grade. It's just too, it's too detailed and not enough students participate. The sample size for each district does not equip it. So if you look at, and again, I highlighted North Grandford. If you look at the math and ELA achievement is generally in the same third of the board. And again, we have already looked at the surrounding towns last month in greater detail. We also looked at the subgroups of free and reduced lunch, high needs and special education, and how our scores for all students compared to subgroups. But I did want to give you this information. If anyone would like the actual grade breakdown and comparisons, I have all of that done. I just don't have it in this presentation. So the next piece that we're going to is the school day SAT. And we have the comparisons already for this, but we didn't have the subgroups. So I'm reminding everyone of this slide, which does represent the SAT participation for the school day SAT in 2021. That 90% is what we look at to really consider statistics worthwhile. This is what was not in last month's presentation. So 67.5%, 32.5% are the high needs students and those students that do not fall in category of high needs. That category consists of students with disability, English Language Arts Learns, and Free and Reduced Lunch. We, if you remember, 38 on average showed about 2/3 to 1/3 split for high needs versus non-high needs students. This is the breakdown, again, the same way. So I have, this is an average score for the ELA SAT. We have all students in the dark purple. In the middle is students that do not categorize as high needs and high needs are in the light. The benchmark for ELA on the SAT is considered to be 480. So above 480 is even the benchmark for A. Junior taking the SAT during the school day SAT.
480?
Benchmark. Math is 530.
Math is what?
530. So again, same thing. What I've done is break down what percentage of students in each of these groups was able to meet or exceed that benchmark that I just said of 480. This would be considered levels 3 or 4 when it's publicized.
And who sets that benchmark? The state?
State. State in conjunction with college board. And what they do is the benchmark is considered to be students that are successful. How they originally determined it was they looked at students that were successful their freshman year in college, what the scores they were, so that they were better than, I think, a C in a freshman English class in college. Mathematics, all students. The non-high needs students, those not classified as high needs. And then that last category is the high needs average score.
And the benchmark in math is 530?
580. Um, 530, excuse me, 530.
So our students did hit the benchmark.
The average score did not hit the benchmark.
Neither did the non-high needs.
But 30% overall did hit the benchmark. 41% of non-high needs students and 7.9% of high needs.
Go back to that.
Yep.
So 481 is all of them and the benchmark is 530.
Mm-hmm. Again, that's an average score for all students.
So you have a mean mode?
I was just gonna.
I don't have that, but I can get that. It's very easy.
Because I mean, right, like, it would be more, like, averages can be skewed so much, but we should see, like, the range where most of our students fall.
I can do that.
It might be more telling of our success rate, right?
That's why I usually show both, but I can also do the other. Then this way, you can see that, okay, so 30.8% did score for 530 in that group of all. 41% of non-high needs and 7.9% of high needs.
That seems low to me. I mean, is that, I mean, what is it, truly, over the years, then?
Higher than that.
A lot, right?
But the benchmark did not change because of COVID. So remember that. Again, we're back in that same situation. This benchmark hasn't changed since the inception of using a school day SAT for the high school standardized testing, federal accountability test. So it doesn't matter if students were, again, and part of what we showed last month, and I do have this in the end of this because I put all the slides in just in case. We determined that 11th graders last year, I think we used January, but consistently at any day that we checked, juniors had the largest percentage of students learning remotely at any time during high school last year. So unfortunately, you know, there's always a myriad of variables that can unfortunately converge to cause what, or contribute to what is lower than normal achievement on this benchmark.
So this is all based on COVID. We should see a higher, it should go up.
It normally is higher.
Yeah.
Over the years, this is not.
So we should see a jump next year.
Math has been increasing actually steadily. But again, with COVID, one of the, actually, the most impacted achievement was in mathematics.
Is it, so assuming it's their first time, first test taken?
They are not first test takers. We actually provide a 9th grade SAT, a 10th grade PSAT, and 11th grade PSAT, also National American College Qualified exam. And then this is the state test that comes in March to April of the year. So in October, we provided to everyone at high school besides seniors. And then each year, we use what the college benchmark considers to be normal or expected growth, assuming regular or average education experiences, so that we use that as growth and determine whether or not students are meeting that growth. And obviously, use that to analyze teaching and learning. Then we move to special education. And our special ed averages come out to be about 14%, 15% overall for the district. This is almost at 20% for the 11th grade class last year, which is the class of 2022. So when you look at the scores, again, this is for language arts, for A being the benchmark, less discrepancy between the average scores. However, discrepancy between the non-special ed and special ed achieving that 3 or 4 level or met or exceeded is definitely a wider discrepancy or larger discrepancy. Again, discrepancies are less within the average scores for each of the groups. However, we did not have any special education students hit the 5/3 benchmark for mathematics. And again, there are factors that have contributed to that, the least of which is not that special ed has been considered the most affected students by COVID and disruptions in educational services as well as mathematics being the area that was disrupted more than language arts. Then we move on to next generation science. Science tests are in grades 5, 8, and 11. That is the federal requirement for accountability. What I've done is combine those graphs. So we have special education, what percentage of students were determined or identified as special education and those that were not, as well as what percentage of students were at levels 3 or 4 or met or exceeded. And then we have the same things for high needs, hovering once again on that 2/3 to 1/3 split. As you will notice, this is the comparison of those local towns that we had last week, well, last month for smarter balance. Our 5th grade achievement is pretty consistent as to what it was with mathematics and language arts. This is grade 8. Special ed, and then high needs. Science achievement. Grade 11. So and things that we can take away from this are clearly that the impact on special education for last year's testing. We can see that not only, there always is a discrepancy, obviously, between the non-special ed and the special ed, the non-high needs and the high needs. But in the case of special education, it has been exemplified, unfortunately. And then we have the slides from last. So what I didn't include in here were the action plans that the buildings had submitted. And as an admin council group, we collaborated on. So these are the plans that the district has in terms of each building and what they're doing to address some of the difficulties that we have already determined students are having for whatever reason, whether it be those disproportionately affected by the impact of COVID-19, those that are having difficulties for whatever reason, as well as the ability to change and address some of those things overall. So not just for the students that were having difficulty, but we know as a district, and quite honestly, as a state and as a nation, that teaching was not the same last year. So regardless of students, whether they were able to do well or not able to do well, we know that their learning was impacted by the pandemic. And we are taking steps to help support students so that they can be where they could at them.
Can I say a question for you?
Sure.
So we're looking at all these test scores like a standalone, basically, right? But when you look at kids, right? They're not just, they're not just test takers, right?
Correct.
How do our kids there in class, like, are they struggling in their math class? Do we have 60% of our kids struggling in math class?
So we do not have, so it does not match with our grades, if that's what you're asking.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
No, so, and that, we do that. We actually do that quite often. I do an analysis when I see this. So for language arts, let's say, 6th grade, because 6th grade has testing on both sides of it, so that would be considered something that we can, is a longitudinal study that I could look at. I will look and say, okay, so someone that scored at a level 1, which is considered below standard, how are they achieving in the classroom? What do we see? So we have, we have different supports in classrooms. Are those supports not available in testing? So there are things that we look at to go forward. This year, obviously, it's very different because I have to look at what learning models every student was in. How often they switch learning models and all that. But on a regular year, we do that, that analysis deeper.
Since, see, I'm getting a guess that there's a disconnect.
There is, and what that, that produces questions. Questions that we have to go and find the answers to. Questions like, okay, so is the curriculum representative of what is being tested? Meaning, are they common course aid standards? Is that what's tested? Is there a focus on something that we're not? So when you look at mathematics specifically, there are clearly things that the test focuses on, like certain units, if you have.
Having multiple choices?
You know, the smarter balance test is not multiple choice. There are multiple choices, but it has a whole different, so this board has a, what we've done over the past is provide examples of the test. The test has many different types of questions. It could be fill in the blank, it's a short answer. It could be an essay, not mathematics, but it could, they have choices where you have to put something on a number line and you drag it back and forth to show an equivalent number. Very, very different than what we used to see as standardized testing.
And is it geared towards critical thinking or?
It is, I mean, it's, so mathematics, just like language arts, and when you look at language arts, common course aid standards, and mathematics, there are practices. So practices represent those higher order thinking skills, and that's what is on the test. And the questions are designed to be able to do that as well as understand content. Like for mathematics, where for language arts, it really is more about skills, and that's where our curriculum goes. So our curriculum really has to be transferring over to be about skills and less about, for instance, a book. So Romeo and Juliet. Really, what we're talking about when we teach Romeo and Juliet, are we talking about Romeo and Juliet? Or are you talking about the skills and the analysis in the sense of this, that you have to be able to do when you're reading a work like that?
So the way I'm hearing it, and it can be wrong, but, so we have higher achievers on the grade side and lower achievers on the test side. And in the middle is that gap. So if we could solve for that gap, your scores would go up, right? So that's, that's.
At this point, what we're doing, and this will be moving forward, it will actually be more concise. Again, because we'll have more scores that are indicative truly of people's, students' achievements, is that, for instance, when I first started working here, Intflex has brought back this availability and the opportunity for things like this, is that you can take students that, so if 480 is the benchmark for language arts, you look at students that scored in October, you know, around that 430 mark or that 450 mark, and we address them very differently than you're going to address someone that's at a 300 mark.
Right.
And we have opportunities now to do more of this than we ever have before. At Intflex, they have opportunities for SAT prep, like an actual course. And then we could tier it if we had to for different levels of success, whether it be their sophomore year or their junior year.
But what if the 430 person was getting an A in honors English?
So.
That's, that's one of ours.
So what we said. Well, it does happen. I mean, I would say those are not, they're exceptions. Those are really exceptions. But they're, I would say that's, when you look at middle school, that's sometimes the case. Because you have to take into account a student's test, what is their motivation? Now, honestly, it's one day. You have to look, did someone, did someone's pet pass away? Did they wake up with a headache? Did mom tell them they had to go to school and take the test that they didn't want to? There are many things that can influence. What we do is, is one, try to help students understand that these are moments in time that they should take and they should work their best because you have those things. Those are the types of things, when we start to add in the social emotional learning pieces of these things and talk about what the importance is of doing your best and working to your potential at all times. We do have to do that. So you have to take into account. We don't, we don't look at just scores in North Grandford. And really, no scholarship.
Yeah.
But what we do is, we look at that whole child or many other aspects come in to looking at students. Students' grades, students' success outside of school, you know, whether or not they do community service. There are many, many things. But the state does not.
No.
So the state looks at scores and other things that they look at in next generation accountability. So eight individual students looked at for their scores. A school is looked at for 12 indicators when you talk about 9 through 12 and less at the other grades because they won't have everything in terms of. Our, so for the high school, we look at 8th grade and 9th grade here and say, were the 9th graders on track for graduation? Meaning, did they all earn at least five credits? So that's something that goes into next generation accountability. In North Grandford, the physical achievement test, the, I think there's still four, is there still four aspects of that test? Four aspects are graded. If we do not, if our students do not achieve all four, we get points taken off for that as a district.
Physical.
On the physical test. And I have to say that it is actually, we've never received, I believe, over 75% of those points. So.
I'm just, that that would be an indicator.
It is, it's, an indicator is students that have access to our classes and have taken one. So that's what I'm saying. So in next generation accountability overall, they're trying to address those things, the gap between special ed and non-special ed. That's a huge indicator, and that's worth quite a bit of points, actually. Those are things that we talk about in accountability. But when the state publicizes school scores, they're talking about this until they get that next generation accountability score. And it could be, it's many different things. So it's whether or not students are hitting growth. So even if you don't hit the benchmark, well, and it wouldn't be for SATs, it's just not for 4 years. So let's say 6th grader, if they made growth from their 5th grade score to their 6th grade score and made the target growth that the state has determined for where they participated or where they achieved during the year before, we get points for that. We get points for how many are at efficiency or above. So there is many different factors, but achievement and standardized test scores is the largest piece of that. And it is what the public sees most.
Tracy, maybe a clarifying question.
Sure.
The, how many tests before they take this, the 11th grade test they said you?
For SATs?
Yes.
So SATs, we have, it's called the SAT IX, it's not a regular PSAT.
Okay.
So you have, that's in October of your freshman year. You take another in October of your junior year, which is the actual PSAT.
Got it.
And then 11th grade, October, you have the 11th grade PSAT, which is also the National Merit Qualifying Test. And then the, the one that the state uses as federal accountability is in March or April each year. And that's junior year. So the scores that you see, while we always do have some other kids that take the SATs, obviously in different school years, like their, some students take it again as seniors, what's recorded in this is always just that school day SAT.
The, the one in March.
Yep.
How does that compare? Are we tracking one, two, and three, and four, or are they just different measures?
What do you mean? So.
So like, how does their freshman October year look to?
So it's a vertical scoring system, meaning that, so your freshman year, you are expected to get approximately 120 points less than you would get as a junior.
Right.
And then each year, the college board has used its measures to determine what typical growth for a typical student would be under normal educational circumstances. So for instance, math and language arts, there's a 20 and 30 point growth expected from ninth grade to 10th grade. And then again, from, from 10th grade to 11th grade. And then from 11th grade, October, to 11th grade, spring, they expect a certain number of points growth. That's how we look at, in a normal year, we would track student progress.
So are their scores in the freshman year of, I guess, yeah, freshman October scores, are they kind of equally lower?
Depends on the class, to be honest with you. So we've had classes that come in to ninth grade and.
I'm sorry, based off the, because COVID is kind of being used as the causation.
So I don't have that here. I don't, because it's a state, but we, but overall, overall achievement is down everywhere after COVID.
Right.
And that's a statewide trend. So the state has come out with what they consider to be their analysis. And now those are the types of things that they've given us. What they said, and I think it was in one of the slides, so when you get that, that other, or actually have it, you can look through it, is some of the only trends that they have publicized are that students that were in school did better than students that were, and that mathematics, out of all subjects, including science and language arts, any tested subject was impacted, the most mathematics achievement was impacted the most by these disruptions. So they meant very general trends that they determined, but they're not things that you wouldn't expect.
Any questions? Now, if you have any questions, obviously tomorrow, you have the emails and addresses.
And I can, as I mentioned, I can give you, there's other things that you want to look at. That we can give you all of that information. The action plans are in that presentation of what the buildings are going to do, what the district, how the district is supporting, how we're using grant money to do that.
What was the email chain on how to send questions? How does that work?
So I believe.
What was the plan?
Usually you send it to me, but if you want to send it to Tracy or Scott.
Consolidate it.
And, yeah, consolidate, yeah, we choose to, but it's fine. If you send it to them, just copy me and Marcy on it. So we know, and then we'll collect them, and then we'll make sure it gets out to the whole board.
If you send it directly to Tracy, CC means, right?
Absolutely.
Sorry, Scott.
I assumed.
I'll remind you.
I'm sorry, Natalie, anyway.
No.
You'd be on the response.
And then she would have come across the hallway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the first track. Just, just wrap it on there.
Absolutely. If there's any other questions, just let me know. If there's any other information or statistics that you would like to look at, I can send them to you separately, whenever you guys would like.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, as we put down the PowerPoint, we're going to move to where we're at here.
Finance report, Martha.
Martha.
Absolutely.
Martha may get a quick one, but I don't, I didn't see.
Put those on really fast.
So there's nothing really of note here, right?
Um, there's a couple of things I want to point out.
Okay.
So new financial system's going, just to update you on where we are with the intermediate school gym floor. That replacement has been scheduled. If you recall, the floor was heavily damaged. It was irreparable from the flooding that we had in early September. We did get quotes, we reached out to the insurance company, they approved the replacement of a Ford floor, current on.
Is that a good floor? I don't know.
It is a synthetic.
It's all about a drum, it's all hairs.
Oh, we're not going to do hardwood anymore.
Swim in there. It's not going to get destroyed. That's a joke. We're looking to swill, swill the bottom of the hill and put a drainage system in so we can get rid of this. And I'm sorry that I'm jumping right now. I've seen this floor replaced now two or three times in my 12 years. So we're, we're trying to correct the water coming off the backside of the NBIS, take the water away from the building, and then we're going to put in a simple rubberized floor.
You're going to add to the building too, so we get a.
I would love to put a full-size gym, but anyway, that's another conversation for now.
So we do have a $50,000 deductible for the floor.
Yep.
I did question that, that's standard for the town and a, any public entity for flooding as well as earthquake.
Oh.
So we're on the hook for 50,000. Once we get the invoice from the vendor, we will be reimbursed for the 49,000 change that we'll have to.
Yeah, got it. Okay.
And in addition, we are submitting an estimate to the insurance company for the repair that Scott just mentioned. Public Works is developing that in conjunction with John. We are going to submit that to the insurance company because they did say that it would be possible, maybe, to cover some of that cost to repair it so that this doesn't happen again. Another thing I want to bring to your attention is our current transportation contract.
I can't believe that's up again. Are you sure?
Yes, I'm sure.
I feel like I.
I thought we just did that.
I felt like we just did it.
Time flies. So we are nearing the end of the five-year contract in June. Because of the current landscape surrounding student transportation, the shortage of drivers nationally, and the fact that we're happy with our current vendor, we would like to ask if we could be, go out and possibly negotiate with our current vendor for a contract extension. I did ask Casbo, and I did ask actually members from ASBO, which is the International Association. So I got responses back from South Dakota and Indiana and Michigan in addition to Connecticut. And they are all saying that if you're happy with your current vendor, the best thing to do, given the state right now, is to try and negotiate with your current vendor. And if that doesn't go well, you would still have time to go out to an RFP if you chose.
I believe our policy does not require us to go out to big.
We don't.
It does not.
For buses, for transportation.
No.
And everything that was described by Martha with DAtco. If you follow any local or state updates with transportation and bringing in outside vendors and clustering and things that are happening, DAtco has been amazing from COVID to now with taking care of everything, after-school events, transportation within, during the district for special needs students, sporting events. They've been great to work with, so I.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, I don't have a problem either.
Are you okay with that?
Of working with DAtco and not bringing a new vendor in, then it's, it's potential.
Yeah, no, I am, I'm good with it.
Will you just keep us?
Yeah, no.
Absolutely. Yep. There is in your packet a summary of Fund 25, which I believe you asked for.
Yeah.
No.
Last month, Fund 25, if you remember, are the different pieces of money that the town has allowed us to carry over from a few fiscal years. I named them all there for you, showed you what the original allocation was, what's currently encumbered, year-to-date expenses, and the balance as of November 9th, which I can tell you there has been no other additional activity in the past 10 days. The majority of expenses there are for big things like the renovation of the order house. And what we're trying to do with these funds is to use them for things that hopefully don't come up.
Not reoccurring.
Again.
One timers, yeah.
Because we don't want to put ourselves in a position, next year, we're, we're at a loss.
So speaking of the order house, I'll spin off now. We're, we're really close to moving in. We're waiting on the, the fire alarm system, which will tie into our phone line. Once that's completed, we will be handicap accessible code, we'll vet all code, and we'll be good to go. So.
Where are these kids now?
They're right here.
Oh, okay.
They're over there. So it's, it's work. We're making it work.
We're making it work, okay.
We're making it work. We're excited. The work that John and his team has done is incredible. And it's going to be, and we're going to have a groundbreaking ceremony once we get in there.
Nice.
And we'll have everyone come in, and you'll really be proud of what our, our students are going to be, the environment they're going to be.
Are they going to be able to use that now from year to year, or is?
Oh, yeah.
Now, now it's.
Yeah. They're going to have to.
Okay.
Yep.
And also included is a summary of grants. So I did the same thing, beginning balance, what we currently have encumbered or expended and what.
Oh, thanks, Martha.
What we're working to, to use. So you can review this information at any time.
Perfect.
And as always, reach out with any questions or concerns.
I do have a question about order house. Scott.
Yes.
So it's handicap accessible, I saw the ramp is there now. It doesn't have to be paved, like a parking spot doesn't have to be paved?
Not at this time. We've been working with parking rec, or not parking rec, parking. I wanted to do that. With, with Framing, his crew, if you would look to do that. The bus is able to come in in circle, and there'll only be two to three cars parked there at a time. They put an additional spot in for cars right near the door. So we're in good shape right now. It's all processed gravel there. It's hard, it's compact, and you'll be able to plow it and get in that.
I didn't know if there's any requirements.
No.
That's fine. Okay.
Everything else had to meet code for, you know, media compliance or lighting and all of that, which we are. Okay, thank you.
How's the software coming? Is it good?
We completed our new chart of accounts. It is, we're revering it one last time before we send it off to Tyler, and then they will put it into our actual financial software. We haven't seen ours yet. We've only seen bits and pieces of what it will look like. But once our new chart of accounts is in, we will actually get to see our software and start training on it. And we have three days scheduled, I think it's the 7th, 8th, and 9th of December, where we'll actually be in our software for the first time, getting used to the lay of the land and how to set things up. So it's moving along well. We're very, very excited.
Good. Make things a lot easier.
Yes.
Okay. COVID update, I always give you a real quick snapshot of what's going on. We had our 8 o'clock Zoom meeting this morning. There's been an uptick in town. You've probably seen it on the news and the percentage for positivity rates, but.
Scott, flu season.
It's flu season. We're, we are, we are in really good shape right now. We continue to notify all when we have a positive case. To date, right now, we've had three staff members since the beginning of the school year. We have 38 students since the beginning of the school year, but that includes a, prior to the start of the school year with a youth football group.
Well, that included them?
The number is lower than that. So we've done a great job. We've continued with precautionary measures, with masking, with distancing, with outdoor mask breaks as frequently as we can. So I'm really confident that we're moving in the right direction. We're keeping kids safe. The phone calls get a little concerning to me about this not ending and the length of predictions for masking, which I really struggle with. I understand, but I really, I'm dealing a lot right now. When I say I'm dealing a lot, my administrators are dealing a lot with mental health issues right now.
Related to masking, actually, amongst other other things, anxiety, depression.
It's, it's a combination of things that have been going on for the last 18 to 20 months.
Yeah.
And, and we are tracking everything, we're, we're monitoring everything, and there's no question. And we are going, that's why I was so excited about our, you know, school psychologist and our mental health staff. I still think we're understaffed because of what we're experiencing right now. And we'll continue. I don't think we know the long-term effects of what this is going to do. When they say you could be masked for two more years, that's alarming to me.
So I, so I guess my asking that is there any word of possibly going to mask-free or mask optional?
Well, February, I think will be a, a time when we'll hear more when the mandates are coming to the conclusion of what they're going to do with the mask mandates. And then we're going to have to collectively come back as a board and have those discussions. And we're going to use all of our data collection in those conversations to come up with what we think is a fair, balanced solution to moving forward.
If it's not state mandated, though.
If it's not.
If it's not state.
So we're having till February. And, and again, I'm more concerned right now with the mental health issues with students that are in crisis.
And I'm talking about. Start talking about putting, building in more on mental health into next year's budget.
And the budget process, I think it would be very wise.
Even if they're one-year position only and we're not committing to, but we could renew a one-year position.
It's, it's going to, it's, it's longer term, but yeah, we could at least start there, and we can, we can, we can go from there. But it's really important when there are such upticks in depression, anxiety, behavioral issues, substance abuse issues, that there's.
We went over 100,000 deaths in this country for overdose deaths. It's the first, that's alarming.
And that's honestly something that teachers are trained to do. That's what clinicians are for. And so, you know, while they may, while teachers may be able to identify initial signs, they shouldn't be like doing any kind of risk assessment on kids. So we should really like look at that because that's just another layer of, of worry and concern, you know, in the school system. And like, let's face it, you're with our kids eight hours a day, and we're up with them, what, three?
Yeah.
You know?
And the, the mental health aspect for all students, all students, and the impact in what we were just talking about with assessment and, and the correlation and connection between healthy mind, healthy body, feeling good, and then being able to meet your potential, whatever your potential is. And so we, we have to wrap that all in the same conversation. Okay. Any questions on COVID, or, you know, we're continuing.
How did the clinic go?
We, we, oh, I'm sorry, we had the clinic last week. We vaccinated 90 of our five to 11-year-olds. 90 students participated.
That's not bad.
It's, when you look at that age group of kindergarten through, say, fifth grade, you're looking at probably 400 to 500 students total to have 90, you're.
20%.
You're, you're in good shape right there. So it was a great turnout. The people were so appreciative, so thankful for us doing it in the building and having the comfort level, being in their town and being with their friends when they got their vaccine.
Yeah, makes it less like it.
And we were a lot quicker. I mean, we had it right away, whereas some of the towns are just starting to have their clinics. So we were right on top of it, which was great.
So in, in two weeks, it's a three-week second shot, so they'll come back again. And then what we'll do is we'll offer another first-time vaccination for another group. So we'll, we'll reoffer that first-time vaccination. Anyone who wants a booster shot, your board is obviously welcome. If you, if you need one or want one, you can come in and get your boosters as well.
The one at NBIS got canceled.
Yeah, they're, they're canceled by the, by the organization, not by North Ramford, they're just using our space. So, and, and we don't have anything to do with anything other than opening the doors to them.
I sent my husband down, and there was a big sign on the door.
Yeah.
I said, bring ice cream home, then. I don't know what to tell you.
That's not. So it was a great turnout, and they were really appreciative of that. So that was good. Okay, town manager pending.
Basic legal services, I just wanted to.
Oh, legal services, I'm sorry. I jumped right over.
Yeah, legal services. So our town, our, our board attorney has retired. And currently, in fact, I'm more sending it for you just because I'm giving you the, the backstory of it. We have three separate attorneys. So one for policy, one for like negotiation and like retainer.
Special education.
And one for special education. So, and there are three different firms, which doesn't seem to make much. And one for special education. So, and there are three different firms, which doesn't seem to make much sense. So, what we're wanting to do is when we start budget, if everybody on the board could do kind of their homework on law firms that specialize in educational law. Typically, most firms have attorneys in them that can handle all three. It might not be the same person, but they can manage all three. So, if we can look at various firms and then we'll discuss them as a board and then we'll maybe have the top two or three come speak to us. And then we can select whether we want to stay with, you know, the three, whether we want to select one, like what way we want to go. But now's a good time to review where we are and set course for the next god knows how many years.
Excuse me, how long have you been using three separate, eight firms?
I don't know.
Over 16 years. Over 16 years, I can tell you that.
A long time. And the nice, we've, we've had a new administrator come on that was in the neighboring district, the larger district, and has worked with various firms and has been very valuable in these conversations. So, I think you'll really like to hear her perspective on who she's worked with. And, and she's had a few months to work with, you know, our firms here, which is always nice to have an outside lens.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I look forward to those conversations.
Do other districts have sole source?
They vary. It really comes down to dollars. There's one that's notorious in Connecticut that charges upwards of two times what we pay for our low-side one at an hourly rate. So, you just have to kind of weigh cost and, you know, what they're doing for us. And we'll have all of that. We'll have a cost out of what we paid all the time and you'll be able to really get an apples-to-apples comparison. Okay?
I mean, the bulk of our spending is on negotiations and special education, right? That's the bulk. But policy, I, you know, I think we can rework a little bit because we do most of the mandates, right?
Yeah, we've cut policy way down because in the past, the attorney would come in, lie, and sit and check. Now, it's if we need them, conference call, they mark up our policy.
Yeah, but it's mandated by the state.
Taxary allegations. And then they get it back to us, redigest it, bring it to the board, yea or nay it. And it's, you know, a highly documented that has a law firm attached to it, just not a ton of power.
You can't name much on the mandated side, so.
Okay. So, that's, that's what we're hoping to do in the next few months. So, if we can just start researching attorneys.
Okay, high school renovation project. I'll just give my quick spin and then I'll, if Beth has anything to add. We poured a lot of concrete over the last two weeks, about 80 yards, John, this week?
80, 85 yards today. Actually, I have two more. That's a lot. We're gonna know where 85 yards.
So, it's had great weather.
What does that mean?
A lot of concrete. It's going into the holes.
The, the, there are, that's, that's footings and walls.
Thank you.
Footing, foundation walls.
Lot of holes to be filled with concrete.
Oh, like, I don't really know, like, okay, so footings first, so.
Footings, foundation walls, and piers for structural steel.
Oh, okay, good.
Then put the corner down. About, about three-quarters of the foundation formed.
Nice.
That's great. So, when the kids are looking out the window, they can see.
You're watching them.
Like, they could actually see structure developing.
You're watching them.
That's cool. All right. That's really cool.
And QA and M had students working with their team, our architectural team.
That's awesome.
That is.
High school middle school kids. So, we had talked about that. That's happening right now.
That is great.
So, it's been, that's been fun. And then.
That's a really great, like, resume builder. I mean, I hate to think that way, but like, what a tremendous experience.
14?
Oh, you got some from Totucket Valley, too.
I'll add you up.
Nice, nice.
I didn't, I didn't. Okay. A lot of conversation about the roof and the roof product, tin versus like a PVC. Well, it's not PVC, but it's, what is it? Myulat, the other roof. We have a tin roof and we have a.
Well, Beth, the committee, she knows. We went from a standing metal roof, stainless steel roof, which we wanted to match to auditorium. So, when the bids came back, that was like seven or something, a stainless steel roof. The architects came back and said, there's a PVC product down here that will save the stainless steel roof. We haven't known the schools. Some guys want to look at the schools for a pause. From the ground, it will save the stainless steel roof.
Plastics.
PVC material.
It's plastic.
So, it was a lesser cost. We came in to put in a green color that's a natural auditorium. So, the building committee said, okay, we'll save that money and spend some around. And that was for an 80 mil thickness PVC roof. Gilbein came back the other day. He said, the roofers came and said, no, the 80 mil is no longer available in the green. Over the 60 mil, they won't give you credit for going from an 80 to a 60 mil, which is a better product. The building committee does not like the better product. It does not like to downsize. So, the committee wanted to kick it back to the board, to the town council. Committee wants to recommend going back to the steel roof.
I like that idea.
I think the committee likes it as well. And you're getting, you want to build a 50-year building.
Right.
And there's no use.
That's insane.
Right.
Roof.
Roof on 50-year building.
Look what we're doing at the intermediate school.
Right, got it.
I'll add it up with the town council, Beth. I don't know. I guess one day we'll find out.
I talked to my boss. So, they're still researching and they had open ears and were listening. And so, it's all in the research process right now. The only, the thing with the 80 mil, they had it in the color white. That was the only color which we didn't want.
So, it's not gonna match? It'll be stupid.
So, and going to 60 mil.
Okay, all right.
So, at least they didn't say no. So, that's a good thing.
No, 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 no. They, they want to do this right.
Yeah.
The town wants to do this right. So, we're still in the conversation stage and we're researching and we'll certainly have our say. And, you know, what, what we've seen, we have, we have a tin roof at TBS and it functions very well. We have a tin roof on the auditorium. We've had great success. The right thing to do would be to correct MBIS, match the high school one time. And then for 50 years, we're smiling and there's no water coming into our buildings. So, sorry, Beth.
That was pretty much the purpose. I mean, Rusty wasn't pleased with the 60 mil because he wrote it up as 80 because of all the trouble that we had at MBIS. And nobody wanted to go with the white. So, they went back to the town council and said, will you put up the money for the metal roof?
Yeah.
I think we'll be shaking hands at the center of the intersection.
John?
I'll take a shift.
We get a 50-year roof.
I'll take a shift.
We want to build this one right.
Exactly, John.
We're gonna get this one right. Building committee, the, the personal committee wants this. They're, they're awesome group. There are questions we've got.
That's it.
All right, committee reports. There was no negotiation. Budget and operations is now part of this meeting. We had curriculum, beautiful presentation. Pension, there was no pension meeting.
It's the first.
Okay. ACES, Jeff?
Yes. Their meeting was this afternoon. So, let's see. They went over the proposed rates for service tuition increases and it was approved by the board. It roughly goes to, I guess the lowest would be 4% increase in some of the schools. And the highest, it went to 7.9% increase. So, ECA.
I don't know if we use those numbers.
Yeah, ECA was 4%. So, that was on the low side. That's where the other schools went up. It's based on.
We need to be aware of that.
Well, they'll, obviously, they'll notify you too. But yeah, I have all the figures of you, you know, now. But they just approved it and then they won't be notifying, you know, the districts. It's for next year?
Next year. Right.
I'm sorry. Something wrong or?
No, I'm trying to do the math in my head, but I can't.
So, 4% for ECA.
I think I'm lower than.
It's a 5,000, it'd be, it went from 5,680 to 5,907 dollars. So, that was 4%. Yeah. So, I have the list here. We're, we have what? I think we are in three different schools for ECA. We have some kids in Village.
Oh, we have multiple.
Yeah, and then we have them in, yeah. So, I, I have a list of where we are. But, so that was approved, the increases. We approved a non-bargaining employee salary and benefits contracts. That takes about 101 of their employees out of 1,000. So, there's not a lot of, of non-bargaining employees. And then we discussed they're going, looking to open up a preschool and kindergarten program. It's gonna be ACES International. It's a Helen Doran International program. They just went to Korea to look at the program. It's about teaching young kids language. So, ACES would be opening up multiple schools throughout the state. And their, their focus will be Spanish. So, it's programming. It would be paid tuition. So, this is not something you could, you know, you would be paying for your child to go to pre-K program in kindergarten. And they'd be immersed in Spanish, English, as well as learning just normal curriculum. So, they are looking to implement that, which is, you know, exciting.
That's really interesting.
So, yeah, and it's, so it's, right now, it's K, you know, pre-K and K. And then the question is, what do you do with your child? In first grade. That was my question.
They're gonna start becoming bilingual until they can become bilingual.
Right, until you don't, they don't get it daily. Cause that's, they're gonna get immersed Monday through Friday.
That's such a great idea.
So, the Helen Doran, she's a, she's the developer of this program. I think they have, she has curriculum that goes all the way up to high school. So, maybe sometime in the future that they'll continue the program. But as of right now, it's still, it's to pay. You have to pay to go to this program. So, that was the big things. Just did normal resource report, curriculum report, early head start reports. That's pretty much, their COVID report, I guess 91% of their staff is vaccinated. And they've had like 100% compliance with the testing if you're not vaccinated. So, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, you got the building report on it already. There was no communication. New business. Visitors and press. Go to the board.
Oh, wait, we have a visitor.
I'm sorry, I missed you.
Glad to have you on.
Hi, Anthony.
Hi. Anthony Esposito, Foresty Road, Harris County. I've had four children go through the North Cranford School System and all had excellent experiences. My third child, Abigail, was a member of the class of 2018. And as was custom at that time, in the first week of their senior year, there was an assembly where they were given their transcripts through the junior year. We said to them, you use to apply to colleges. On the bottom of that transcript was their class ranking. And Abigail, we knew all along, was very smart. We were over the moon with pride when she was ranked number one in the class. His paper she got at that night says she was number one in the class. Well, the excitement that we shared as a family and spread amongst all our family and friends, everybody else, wasn't shared by the community, especially others in her class, or the parents of the kids in her class. And almost immediately, there was an effort to discredit her standing as number one. Based on the fact that besides all the AP classes she had taken academically, she had also taken band classes. She was a well-rounded band person, starting with Bart Tedeschi at TBS and Meredith Soul at the middle school, and then Kate Traynor, who was a home run at the high school. So, the, the end result was after, I think it was three recalculations. First recalculation, there was a, she was, there was some movement amongst the top people, but Abby was still number one. Couple regenerations, then it took a hand calculation. We had nothing better to do to stop the director of curriculum, what she was doing, and hand calculate the grades. And the end result, Abby was number three. Still impressive, but not number one. Why is that important? Well, Abby has, really likes research and biology. So, all along, we've been looking at colleges in Pennsylvania. We looked at Lafayette and Lehigh. That's on the honor. And she chose Lafayette. That's where she was gonna go. Great school, great school. But when the number one ranking came out, we were advised and we confirmed with UConn. UConn has a thing called the Presidential Scholarship, where they offer a free ride to the number one student. And if you recall back around that timeframe, they were getting in a relationship with Jackson Labs. Would have been a perfect marriage for research, things like that. So, the end result is she's number three. She's in Lafayette. She's doing phenomenal. She still plays music, still in the band, the marching band there. So, why am I here today? I'm here today from a conversation that I have a ton of love back. We have to remember that first and foremost, we're parents. And I neglected that duty. I should have been here four years ago, fighting as hard for my daughter as the others were fighting to discredit her. And I apologize to her. You're not doing that. But I'm here today as PSA, the other ones that have kids in the school system. Remember that regardless of the position you hold, and I hold a couple of positions, your parents first. Keep that in mind.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other visitors? Press? Go to the board.
Quick question. Mr. Stefler, Mr. Woods, not to put you on the spot, about how many students are in our junior class? Roughly.
It's right around 120.
And what about senior class?
Seniors are often, say, freshmen, sophomore, just right down the first floor.
So, we had 35 students inducted into the National Honor Society. That's 30%. That's roughly 30% of the class. I think that's pretty great.
We also had another 21 inducted into the Spanish Honor Society.
That's what I wanted to ask.
So, the seniors were the second time.
It's right here in my notes, Spanish Honor Society. So, what's, I'm just curious, what's the difference between just for, for Spanish, just for language? There's the Special Honor Society just for that?
Yes, they have to maintain a certain grade point average for two school years, two college years.
That's fairly new, Spanish Honor Society, right?
2017 was our first year.
That's far.
I, I think that's phenomenal. 30% of our students approximately. So, we talk about test scores. You know, we talk about all this, but, you know, we also can't teach to a test. You know, we also have to give these kids accolades for what they deserve. 30% of that class, of those classes, I think is phenomenal. Just saying.
I think we find the gap. So, I say this to my daughter and I, I don't know, is Anthony still back there?
He is back there.
So, so one of the things I said to my daughter, who is a sassy little one, but I say to her, when you achieve your bar, I will be there to push it higher. And I think that's what we need to do for ourselves. As an example, if we talked about social emotional learning and accountability, it's about not being stagnant or complacent. And so, while you achieve the Honor Society, the Spanish Honor Society, and if you're lacking in test scores, we can all improve all the time on every part. Sometimes it's academically, sometimes it's personally, sometimes it's just a little bump in the road and how to build up from it. But, so we celebrate those successes and we take them in and then we look, we reassess and say, all right, where's the next goal?
Absolutely.
Part of what we're gonna teach our students.
Never stop reaching. Never stop reaching.
And hopefully, we'll have a championship under our belts next board meeting. Yeah, so hopefully, we'll have that. Anything else for good of the board?
No, I just want to say, I guess, of the Veterans Day celebrations which the school had, just want to again commend the schools for doing that. My son did, you know, the virtual and he, he enjoyed it. He even talked about it. And we watched it again when he was home. So, I just want to commend what we do, the teachers and the principals and administrators. What a great thing we do, celebrating our veterans.
I think it's so important the kids are in school on that day, instead of just being home.
Yeah, I know. You think, oh, wait, they should be on. But when we, when we celebrate the veterans and make it part of the day, I think it makes it really special and they get way more out of the day than if they were home, you know, watching their iPads or TV.
Right.
Like my son would be. So, yeah, so, thank you.
Yeah, is it possible to have each kind of school give a brief synopsis of what they did to honor Veterans Day? Is that possible? Do you have time for that? Maybe it's just, hey, the highlights of it, maybe, if there hasn't already been talked about.
So, we start at the bottom and go up?
Sure.
Oh, sure. The bottom, the youngest.
That's crazy.
That's the bottom.
Okay, let's start at.
That's crazy.
With our little.
Let's start at our youngest learners and go to our oldest.
Much better. So like Janice said, we did do a virtual assembly this year for Veterans Day where we really look to teach our children, what is Veterans Day? What is the need? Why is it so important? We obviously highlighted a lot of veterans within our community, a lot of parents. Our students were involved through song, through our student community, through essays about what it really means to be a veteran and really just had that opportunity to watch them together as a group as a school.
Our next group of young learners.
Ours was very similar. The day prior, they had an opportunity to listen to the live author talk about the young soldier and the importance of that.
Oh, that's awesome.
Which was pretty moving for the kids, they learned that. And that was also connected to the virtual presentation that we did on Veterans Day as well. The kids had the opportunity to celebrate veterans in their lives and their community as well. And then the outside of the building was decorated with flags all down our road and ancient rocks that the kids had made that were patriotic, ancient. We miss having veterans, that's really.
Yeah.
Probably a day we would much rather.
We always have the Veterans Day.
Maybe next.
For breakfast and serve them bread. Jerome Harrison always has a breakfast for them and a little assembly and it's really, I miss that.
We always run a full day of activities.
Interesting.
Next year, that's where we're all.
So at MBIS, we typically recognize veterans in the building the day before Veterans Day. And one of the main reasons why we do this, and I always call out Mr. Potter, is because Mr. Potter was one of our local veterans, always comes to MBIS, is always a big vocal, that he appreciates being able to come to school the day before Veterans Day, because I think you go to his Veterans Day recognitions that they put in place for veterans. Not to mention, we have four middle school, four schools in town and everybody's jockeying for veterans. Doing it the day before gives us a pretty good advantage. So, so this year, we obviously didn't have people in, but we had veterans present virtually. Typically, we'll do the musical, you know, presentation. We have our chorus and our band put together some musical numbers that we play virtually. It was all done through our Pride Time. And like Dr. Welch's school, we, we have 1,500 mini flags that we line up in MBIS that we put out. Mrs. Colm puts them out, she'll put them out, members of our National Junior Honor Society. And then on actual Veterans Day, our social studies classes are recognized a day and our social studies teachers address it to make sure that's being addressed from a historical perspective. So that's what we do.
I think our kids spoke about this in their year report. We decided to have Larry Turner come back. He's a graduate, typically we have him on, not Veterans Day. Mr. Woods and Travis Reynolds, they have a global forum organization, kind of spirit